Thank you, and good evening to everybody tonight. Now, welcome to the City Council meeting of March 5th, 2009. The first part of the meeting is the public comment period, and I forgot to ask, is there any -- did anybody sign up? I'm assuming they did. Do you mind getting it, Councilor Hertzler? You have to figure out one of those. I think the first person is Victoria Regish. And I'm going to ask people to identify themselves by name and address when they speak.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Regish, and I live at Glen Row in Florence. Thank you, Mayor Higgins and City Council, about the proclamation making lunch meant to retardation, but that changed. It gave me a chance for a three-minute speech to talk about my two retarded sons and family members. In the past decade, I always advocated for families' support day programs, respite, direct care day programs, community and residential programs, not group home. But since People First has co-owned the rally for DMR, DMR wants budget cuts of $85 million, $11,000 losing support services to keep their families together. One -- oh, I gave you a package of these. 200 children with autism are going to lose their services. 15,000 of the direct supports being left out of the budget. That's strange. When Rainey was having his day program, it cost $15 for his program from going to Metro Apartments to Sunshine Village. Now that's going to be left out. And I don't see, and there is line budgets of salary administrations, they're getting just as much as the cuts, and I -- and I also put on page three of this package of that hype. People are earning more than the contractors are. I mean, and my last thing is Governor Patrick signed into law not laboring people with disabilities. I had that label for almost 50 years of my life. I wish you wouldn't change any more stuff. I'm getting hard to keep up with things. And in the picture that I wrote, this is like what people wanted my sons to live in, Belgium Town State School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you'll be here to receive your proclamation, too? Yeah, okay. Next is David Corbett.
David Corbett, Fort Hill Terrace. First, I'll start off with a great experience I had today at the assessor's office. Went in about Veterans Affairs, and they were very, very helpful and pleasant to deal with. One thing I'd like to ask, if maybe somebody could ask that gives that, to publish the NCTV programming in the newspaper with the rest of them. You know, we did them a good favor by getting them a good tax break. I'll move on. An experience I just had about shopping and going to Gardner. The first time I went there, I followed all these fancy decals and didn't find what I was looking for. I wanted to buy local. To find local, we went back a second time, off the beaten path, following the signs. Then we found what we were looking for, a local, no-high-end advertising, just regular down-to-earth people. One thing that impressed me about it was when a guy asked me where I was from. I said, "Northampton." He said, "Well, that's great entertainment in Northampton. Calvin was fantastic shows, and the restaurant and the dining in Northampton was fantastic also, and a clean place." He gave high praise to it. Now, part of this bid thing is having a policeman downtown, more police presence. We had more police presence at one time when the police department was responsible for picking up the money out of the meters. But we took it away from them. We created another parking division. Maybe it would be something to go back, you'd have a policeman on call if needed, just like the fire department with paramedics being able to perform police -- or fire department work. They give them some of the money back that they need, and that would give the presence of police downtown again. Okay. Now, the Academy of Music. We just allotted $50,000 a couple of years ago to heat it. We're going another $50,000 with this bid, plus we're doing the maintenance out there. That equals three schoolteachers. One of our gyms of the city with a patchwork sidewalk. And we have the Arts Council giving away $20,000 to somebody over in Amherst to start the Pleasant Street Theater. Then you got the people that are young at heart chorus, $20,000, give it to the Arts Council. We're the people that give the money to the academy. Why isn't that being asked for? Where's our support? We open our doors to everybody, and yet we get none, apparently, money.
About a half a minute left.
Okay. And, okay, I'll go on to the last meeting. You had Smith College in Northampton, who's still in talks about this bid and what their portion of it would be. Was that ever ended? What's the results of those talks? Are we going to have something again like we had with the overlay district where nobody knows and everything's done without being seen? Okay, that's about it. Next time.
Okay, thank you. Amy Bookbinder. And again, I'm going to ask you the state and name and address sometime if anyone's here.
Amy Bookbinder, 88 Grove Avenue. I'm actually here reading a comment from someone else who couldn't be here, and he asked that I read it for him, and that's Jesus Leyva, and I don't know his address. So here is his comment. "My concern is about the conversation about whether 25% or less is zoned something other than commercial, industrial, or mixed use, or whether it is true that 27% of the area in the bid is zoned urban residential. In response to how much of the area of the bid is zoned, in what way, and whether it does or doesn't count as mixed use, that is not really the point so much as how many of the entities within the bid fit the bid profile, how many do not, and what percentage of the bid fits the profile of the bid and what percentage doesn't. I would imagine that the reason why it is required that a bid be zoned 75% industrial, commercial, or mixed use is to prevent a bid from changing the character and nature of a residential area. Bids are designed only to benefit businesses that fit the profile of a bid, hotels, restaurants, gift shops, arts and entertainment venues, and they are usually successful at that, decreasing vacant storefronts in the area by 15%, raising hotel room occupancies, and generally providing more business to restaurants, gift shops, and entertainment venues. But bids are known to raise property values in and around the bid, and while those entities within the bid that fit the profile of the bid and are directly benefiting from it can pay the increased rent or tax that entities within the bid where -- don't fit the profile. Residential tenants, residential property owners, other non-commercial tenants and owners and businesses with a more localized customer base that don't benefit from the bid's marketing just see an increase in their expenses and are economically forced out of the bid. So opting out might save you from the bid fee, but it doesn't save you from the increased property tax or rent due to the presence of the bid. Moreover, when those entities vacate because they can no longer afford to be there, they are replaced by other entities that fit the profile of the bid. This means that the original businesses that fit the profile of the bid are now competing for the same consumer base. We ultimately lose the delicate balance of our downtown that makes it an affordable and wonderful place to live, work, and be idle." Thank you.
Councilor LeBarge, is this on the bid?
Yeah.
Because you're going to have a whole opportunity to like to speak.
Is that going to cover you off?
No.
Okay.
All right. Pamela Schwartz.
Good evening. Pamela Schwartz, 22 Columbus Avenue. First, I wanted to thank Councilor Narcowitz and the entire Finance Committee for pulling together the meeting last week to detail next year's budget prospects. I also want to thank Mayor Higgins for providing such detailed and helpful information on just how bleak it is. I have to say, I walked away from that meeting registering on a new level that our precious city is somehow not destined to magically escape the worldwide economic meltdown, that it's not a question of whether we will feel the hurt here, too, but only of what we can do to lessen it. I think it's critical to start with the fact that our crisis is part of a much larger crisis, that the $6 million budget gap is truly extraordinary in these extraordinary times, and that it will require extraordinary action to close it. I fervently hope that the action taken involves every one of us giving more to lose less. There is no one solution. Not a single budget cut, or a single wage freeze, or a single override can tackle the magnitude of this problem. But if we do it all together, make the cuts where we can possibly stomach them, agree to the wage freezes for wages that are hard-earned and deserved, pay some more in property taxes when, of course, we would rather pay less, if we do those things that are so difficult to do, then we will all come out better and stronger for it. We will save jobs that not only serve our children, our safety, and our streets, but will save us from greater economic downturn. We will save our services that allow us to drive on plowed streets and feel safe in our homes, and get our children a quality education so they can grow up and do their part in fueling a healthy economy. We will, in short, do what we need to do to continue our pride in our city and ourselves as a community. We can follow our president's example, when he said that if we all do what it takes, each of us give up a little something more, we will all emerge from this crisis even stronger as a nation. Let's follow his lead for Northampton and do what it takes to come through this a stronger and healthier community. I thank you for your leadership to help make this happen.
Dorothy Nemitz.
Hi. I'm Dorothy Nemitz. I'm at 44 Monroe Street, and I'm really here kind of with Pam and have the same sentiment that this is a terrible time for the world, for our nation, for our state, for our city, and we're all in this together, and I urge all of us to all think of us as all being in this together, and that we all need to take care of ourselves, of our city, of each other, and that it's going to require sacrifice of all of us in monetary terms, in service terms, and that we all just try to keep a clear head and think about what's best. I also want to say that I support the bid, for what that's worth.
Thank you. Dan Yacouzo?
Good evening. My name is Dan Yacouzo. I live at 88 North Elm Street in Northampton, and I also support the bid. Seriously, I admire what the last two women have said regarding the "all of us in this together." And as a friend of mine has said to me recently, what we're attempting to do with a business improvement district is the paradigm of what the federal government is doing with their national stimulus, only we're not taxing people, people are taxing themselves. They're literally giving up, putting together their money collectively to create a stimulus for our downtown, to improve the environment in which they own property, in which they do business, in which they live, and in which they work. And that benefits all of us. And so I'm here asking you tonight to vote yes on the formation of the Business Improvement District, to accept the sincere efforts that have gone into the last three years of work to put together the petition, to gather the 300-and-some signatures, and to literally meet with over 400 property owners in downtown Northampton and solicit their opinion on what they think we need. In addition to the public forums that we held, the three public forums, and the seven or eight public meetings that we held with individual groups, we tried to canvass as many people, we tried to reach out to as many people to get those opinions. There is a good old days thought that everyone has, that we'd like to return to the good old days. Well, the good old days, I don't think will ever happen again. But there is one thing about the good old days that we can never forget, that we got here through hard work and sacrifice, and we will get past this point with hard work and sacrifice. And knowing the people that I do know in this community, having the pleasure of meeting them and working with them, I know that if the Business Improvement District is formed, that hard work, that earnestness, that sincerity will turn around this community, the downtown community, to the degree that we can all be proud again of what it is, and it will, again, be vibrant and will be an economic force. That's ultimately one of the challenges. It is not only about the economic force, it is about the cohesion of the community. You know, if you read the business plan carefully, we propose to work with the community on many levels, to work with community organizations and cooperate in many levels. So I'm hoping that we have this opportunity, and I hope this evening the council will take the first vote. Thank you for all, by the way, thank you for all of your time over the last couple of months on this. I appreciate it.
Is there anybody else who we should speak with who didn't sign in? Okay. I think nobody will go into the Finance Committee. First, you call them all, Finance?
Councilor Goslin?
Here.
Mayor Higgins?
Here.
Councilor Raymond LeBarge?
Here.
Councilor Murphy?
Here.
Councilor Narcowitz?
Present.
Good evening, everybody. I think we have -- we've been told to do a couple of votes or things. Just one. Okay. So, are we ready?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. So, the first item we have, Finance, is a transfer from the Undesignated Fund of Balance to Departmental Services. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor and Finance Committee that the sum of $152,000 be hereby is transferred from the Undesigned Fund of Balance to Departmental Services benefits.
So moved.
So, second.
Second.
Mr. Connor is here. Does anybody want to look to recognize Mr. Connor?
I'm going to recognize Mr. Connor.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Posed.
Who's in there?
We've been telling people that there was going to be a transfer coming. I think it's been in all the budget worksheets that I've been handing out to you that there will be a transfer coming. This is the transfer that was coming. So, Mr. Connor.
Hi, yes. Our numbers actually, over the last six months, have been relatively stable, but high. I have been keeping up with things that are happening in other communities. The North Quavon area went up 40% in the last year and a half. Gardner doubled their amount of people that they're assisting since like 14 months ago. So, it's happening everywhere. It's happening here in Northampton. We knew we were heading for this. The projection is kind of, I think, with what I'm asking for at this point, we will meet the need for the rest of the fiscal year.
Questions for Mr. Connor? Okay. Are you ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much, I guess. I have a presentation I gave to the Finance Committee, and I would like to do essentially the same presentation tonight. Unfortunately, what you have in your hand, that it'll be a little different than what's on the slides because I couldn't get the --
I've got my oneie.
You know, it's inevitable that the computer doesn't work.
Get the one you need.
It doesn't have the updated version of PowerPoint on the computer, but it's essentially the same. There's a few different charts in here. So, why don't we just go through it? Do we need to hack the light off, or do we -- do people see okay?
Steve, if you can hit the one that's to the far right.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. This is just going to run basically through where our money comes from, and where, you know, some information about sort of basic budget information. The bulk of our money comes from the property tax, and you can see that on your handout as well, it's set up a little differently, but the bucket of money comes from the property tax. Property tax fell off the bottom of your handout for some reason, but that's the first and largest chunk of money. After that are federal and state aid, and local receipts, all local receipts, and the biggest local receipt we have is tuition for Smith's vocational school, and then a number of other smaller miscellaneous revenue sources. Another way to look at it is on the next chart, and what that shows you there is that the lowest bar, which is the local taxes, was 50% of our budget in 1999. It's almost a 60% of our budget now. As our state aids decline, property taxes are having to make up a bigger portion of our total budget. And I'll show you some other ways to look at this, too, just to help us think about it. You have a chart that shows the net state aid as a share of the budget. This shows what happened in real dollars to the aid. Your chart shows basically what happened to the state aid as a share of the budget, and the budget line is, you can barely read. But the budget has gone up on that, basically on that linear progression, the state aid has stayed essentially almost flat. The next page shows you what happened with Chapter 78. I backed out the charter school money on the next page because we can't spend the charter school money in the local public schools. We have to send that to charter schools. So I netted it out of the Chapter 78, and what that shows you is that, on your chart, is that the Chapter 78 has been essentially flat, while the school budget has been rising almost every year, with the exception of the 2003, 2004 school year, when we also were pretty hard-hit on aid cuts. And you see those there. That's where we went from, we dropped by $2 million in local aid in Chapter 78. You can see that drop here, and on your chart, you can see that drop as well. And then we netted out the charter school money. Just a little slide on how Prop 2 and 1/2 works. You start with the base levy, which is the biggest bar there, and then you add 2 and 1/2 percent. Then you add the new growth. So in the first couple of years there, in the 2007, 2008, the new growth was in the 700, 600 range, even in 2009, in the 600 range. We're projecting about $300,000 for next year because, quite frankly, there is not a lot of building going on in the community. There's not a lot of commercial development, and I think, Terry, is Terry here somewhere? I think most of the development right now is happening at the state hospital site. At all the development in the city, that's where it's at. It's a very low number. Then after you add the new growth, then you add the debt exclusions, and that's the blue bar, and that's getting smaller as time goes on. We're paying off the debt on the middle school, the high school, and the fire station, and eventually that will go away. So that number's going down on people's tax rate. So, where does the money go? 73% goes to salary and benefits. 18% to all the utilities and supplies that we buy, about 1% is other than ordinary maintenance, and that's really one thing. That's the police cruisers that we buy. I don't think there's anything else there, really.
There's some money in the drinks, the store drinks.
I'm sorry, store drinks. Right, that's the other thing that's in that line. And then debt service is about 8%. We're going to talk about debt service again, but it's 8% of the total. How's the money allocated? Well, education gets about 61%. That includes Smith School and the Northampton Public Schools. You can see the different slices of the pie. And where do people work? 66% of the people that work for the city work in education, and then the other numbers sort of follow with the other slide. And I think there's a higher number in education in terms of working because it's a very labor-intensive business, running a school, running a school system, and we also have not just the, all of the teachers and all of the other folks, a large group of paraprofessionals, and then all the other folks that work to run the schools. Yeah, you want to go back to that one?
Yeah. How is the money allocated on that particular one?
Yeah.
In the education, you're saying 61% of the money is allocated to education.
Smith School and Northampton Public Schools. And if you break that out, Smith School of that is probably about 9%, and Northampton Public Schools are the remaining 52 or more.
Okay.
Approximately.
And 52%. This was a question that was asked last night.
Right. We're going to --
That forum.
Yep. Next iteration, I can break it up by both Smith Oak and Northampton Public Schools.
And who gets paid? Which people, you know, out of this? And you're saying all of the people that are in the school system? Less custodians or plus custodians?
No, including everybody, everybody. Everybody that's on the school payroll is reflected on this next slide, on the two schools payroll.
That's dining.
Who are general fund, right. So that doesn't include a Title I, people who are paid throughout it, any grants are Title I.
That's not in there.
No, it's not in there, right.
So dining people also.
Oh, thank you for asking that question, Councilor LeBarge. The cafeterias are fully self-supporting and are not paid for through the general fund. Any savings in the cafeteria or anything like that would not add to the general fund in particular.
Cafeteria self-support.
Right.
Does that mean, Mayor, that the people who work in food service are not included in this personnel list?
They're actually not because they're totally self-supporting. I don't think we --
They and their supplies and their equipment are all paid for through revolving funds, for the cafeteria revolving funds. They get state money into them as well as the fees that they get for the students.
And your health benefits, also.
The health benefits, I think, we're paying.
We're paying.
Right, that's the support we give. And that's not reflected in the school budget, that comes out of the city budget.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, all right.
Any benefits come out on the city side of the budget.
So then to go back one slide, the 61% of the spending does not include anything about food service in the schools.
No.
Is that correct?
That's right.
Could you make that statement once more? You said, "None of the medical comes out." Does that include teachers?
This includes, none of the health insurance comes out of the school budget.
Health insurance?
Health insurance is on the city side of the budget. It's never been charged off to the schools.
Okay.
The appropriation budget goes to the schools, they pay for their teachers and all that other stuff, but we, on the cities, where the city side of the budget picks up both the, not only the medical, but also, you know, when we talk about retirement?
Yeah.
That's retirement for everybody but teachers. The teachers have their own retirement fund.
Yeah.
So custodians, the teaching assistants, clericals, all those folks, including the cafeteria, they're in the city's retirement system, and we pay that share.
Now, this slide that's up here right now that says net fixed costs, that means that that is net of those kinds of healthcare retirement costs that they backed out of this. They're not in here.
Right. So I didn't attribute those. You'll see that I did allocate later. So if you look at this slide, 66% of the people work in education, and it's fair to say that at least 66% of the health insurance goes to people who work in the school system because 66% of the people work in education, and we also often cover health insurance for people on grants where the grant covers the salary, but we may pick up the health insurance. Okay? Other questions on this slide? Just so people know, by the way, Human Services includes Steve's budget and the Board of Health, and Council on Aging. General Government is all of the offices that are in here and in the other buildings, and, you know, the assessors, the collectors, the auditors, the treasurers, all of those offices are in General Government.
Mayor, that's a small bit of piece for Human Services.
Correct. It's pretty small. Yeah, yeah, it's not a very big number. What are the fixed costs? You know, Chris just mentioned fixed costs, health insurance, debt service, retirement, assessments. Assessments are things that the state government is going to charge us for various things. Abatement reserve, we've talked about this before, this is when somebody files an abatement on their taxes. We have to have a little bank of money so that we can give them the money back if they are successful in their abatements. There's one little tiny slice up there that says other amounts to be raised. That really reflects two things. One is an assessment for a PVTA bus, and the second is the lockup. You know, we have the county lockup now, regional lockup at the jail. We pay a dollar per capita. It saved us money because we no longer have to have a full group of people who are cell attendants at our own police station. We pay this instead. So it saved us -- So it saved us.
Could you explain what you said, assessment says a, makes the state.
You want to do, I'm not going to be articulate on the assessment.
The assessments, we get charged back from the state. They actually deduct it from our local aid for charter school assessments, school choice assessments. There's a thing called mosquito control districts that we get hit every year for about $1,600. There's a bunch of little PBT As in there. The state, basically, they, they make us raise it and they take it away from us. That is what they do.
The money never actually shows up. It's backed out of our local aid.
Backed out of our local aid when they give us their distribution each quarter.
So the biggest, the biggest numbers in there probably are definitely the charter school. We have a smaller amount on school choice going out. And then the PBT A are probably the three biggest numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, those are.
Okay. What about debt? People ask a lot about the debt. Remember I said it was 8% of the budget? Of all the debt, of that 8%, about 71% is going to Northampton Public Schools primarily for the middle school, the high school. We have another year on JFK and Lee's. The windows and doors we did at Bridge Street. We did some work at Ryan Road. You know, every year you approve a capital list and you know what's on that list. We did the barn roof at, multi-species barn at Smith Oak. We did heating plant at Smith Oak.
New parking.
And we did the five-year technology plans in both school systems. So all of that is reflected in there. But the largest amount is clearly the override. Smith Oak is a small slice. The public safety is primarily reflects the fire station. And March equipment like fire trucks. Senior Center is 6%. DPW is 4%. And you'd think we'd be spending a lot more, but this does not reflect chapter 90 because it's not coming out, chapter 90 doesn't come out of the general fund.
And it doesn't reflect either.
And it does not reflect the enterprise fund. So no sewer, water, or any of that in here either. It's just general fund. The libraries, remember we did renovations on both libraries, so that's reflected there. And I'm not reflecting any CPA contributions to any of this. So the open space number looks low, but we've done a significant amount of open space acquisition through grants and through CPA. So you're not going to see that necessarily. The state, you know how you often will do a borrowing authorization for open space? And then you'll resend it?
Because it's never spent.
We never actually spend it. We've fundraised for it with CPA or state grant. That's what's allowed us to do it. So the debt profile, I want to show you here that the state aid, that green line at the bottom is the state aid that's coming in for the school construction. And you can see where we refinanced it and then it's going to start to go down again.
It's going to start dropping off in 2010, after 2010.
Is when it really starts going.
As we drop bridge and the streets of school.
And you can see that the high school override, which is the pink one, is starting to get smaller. The fire station is reducing. You can see them all going down. And then the rest of that is general fund that's been filling in. Okay?
All of our debt structures are borrowing, it's a high front end.
Yeah. Is that state hospital structured that way as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all high principal to begin. And because you pay, you pay the interest on the remaining principal. I'm sorry, principal remains static. It's the interest that goes down each year. So you're paying high interest at the inception of it. The interest that you pay in every subsequent year is based on the remaining principal. So the interest payment is actually decreasing.
Yeah.
Structured like a mortgage.
Well, mortgages, even payments.
You pay levels, but there is a drop in, but you're paying a level payment. These are actually payments that go up and then drop off.
Yeah.
So what are the challenges this year? We have a state aid cut in this fiscal year, this year going into next year, because we really have more like an 18-month problem, not a 12-month problem. We probably actually have more like a 30-month problem. But we have, we got a state aid cut in January of $530,000 and another state aid cut this June, July of 1.5 million dollars. Excise revenue is down by about 7%. People aren't buying new cars. Our excise taxes are going down. Interest income is down by 60%. Anybody who has money in the bank has had the same experience. We are not getting the kind of interest that we budgeted for even in July. And in July, we were conservative about our interest projection. I think you cut it from last year and we still were, we were still below. We have negotiated increases that are up by about 1.2 million dollars. These are contracts that are either signed or projected. Actually, these are all assigned ones. Health insurance, we went out to bid on health insurance. Our health insurance broker came back and said we're going up 1.7 million dollars. 20% increase on our health insurance. We have the same plan we have today, same benefits, same group. I guess we're a pretty sickly group because out of the, out of the, every dollar that they get, they're spending about 98% on claims. And they actually like to make some money. So they are increasing our premium by a fair amount. So we're out to bid, well, we'll talk about what we're doing about it, but.
Yeah, you're, you are sitting with the insurance committee.
Right.
Looking at the plans to restructure and so on and a possibility of going out again to bid.
Yeah, I'm going to get to some of our options, but we certainly are. And the committee Jim refers to is something called the IAC, the Insurance Advisory Committee. It's made up of the presidents of the union, has a retiree representative on it. And we meet with them every year and I've been doing that since I started, meeting with that group. And we have a very savvy group of employees who know a lot about insurance.
In past years, I remember you identifying what other comparable cities, towns looked like in terms of their increases. And we've done pretty well for a lot of years. Do you know what other increases are like? Is 20%?
We're high this year.
Okay.
We're, we've stayed ahead of the curve for most of the years. This year we're up compared to other places. And it's because we had a really bad claims year last year. It's really based on our claims more, it's not, you know, we, yeah. Other fixed costs are up. That includes contracted services like the computer licenses.
But also electricity, fuel, oil.
Primarily, primarily utilities, yeah. And then our free cash and stabilization are down. Whoops, I didn't mean to go to the end. Let's go back. Where are we? Yeah, that's it. If Brian Duggan was up here, he could make this work properly. I achieve.
I'm just in awe that you're using it.
I knew I'd get paid back.
I didn't, I didn't come for sure. I came to watch it.
Here, in your sheet, I've added some information. So this is the ups and downs from this current year. But, so the 2009 budget was 72,253,000 dollars. So here's what we would go up and down from that. And if you look at the bottom line, we're down 2 million from our 72 million dollars. So we have less, we're down real money next year to spend by about 2 million dollars. Okay, so we're going to go up, are allowed 2 and 1/2 increase plus new growth, $300,000. Mortar vehicle excises down. Smith Oak tuition, they're projecting taking in a few more kids, 10 more kids that will allow them to go up. Interest on investments, you can see that that's a big drop. Charges for services pretty flat, pretty flat because we don't think anything else is going to go up dramatically. When you take Smith Oak out, that's building inspections going with anything else. Yeah.
Mayor, on the property tax, I know last night at the meeting it was brought up about the people who are behind on the taxes.
Yeah.
Right, and I did say to them that we have been really good about working with the taxpayers who are delinquent. Maybe you can give a little update?
That's a good question. City council, remember that when we have the auditor in, the outside auditor, I think he's going to be in again pretty soon.
Oh, yeah, he's delivering the audits to us next year. You can expect him to be on the council agenda for the Saturday meeting in March.
We have a collection rate that's really around 99%. So every year about 99% of the bills are paid. So we have a delinquency rate, but I think we have less than a million dollars at this point.
A little over.
Little over a million uncollected.
In tax title.
I'm sorry, in tax title, meaning that we're.
It's over a year old.
And we're aggressively going after that. There are a couple really big ones and the rest of them are very small. And these are over, you know, decades that this has built up, right? So I've said this to you before, in a small tax title where it's a home, where it has a senior, for instance, we're not going to kick them out of the house to get the, to get the bill, to get the money. We work with them to either set up a tax payment plan or if they don't pay, we're collecting 16% interest on the house, on the tax bill.
And we have a lien on the place, so whenever.
When it sells.
Sells, we're going to get our money for a person.
So the couple big ones we're working on, I have to say, George, Zimberman's done a very good job of collecting a lot of back taxes, we're in pretty good shape.
How much are the big ones?
The $300,000.
The biggest ones at PBT.
Yeah, $300,000 is the biggest one. And that's one that I think we're going to probably end up having to deal with at DOR or court.
And the next one back from that's in the $40,000. So I mean, that one is so gigantically larger than everything else we have. And then there's one at $40,000 and the rest, the rest are all under $30,000.
And the $300,000 one is the PBT A one. It's not clear whether or not, there's a real legal dispute about whether or not we should have assessed those taxes in the first place. So the only way to solve it is to go into court to figure that out. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
But if I may, our collection matched against other cities' funds.
We're doing fine.
It was astronomical. We're way ahead of the standard.
Well, you'll ask Mr. Scanlon when he's in, but I think he'll tell you that was a very good collection, right? And that's a tribute to the citizens of the city. They pay their taxes on time. Your spreadsheet's organized a little differently, so I'll go by the one you have. You can see the state aid, the lottery distribution. We think that we're going to get less, excuse me, charter school, we're going to get a little bit less in reimbursement next year. So that's a cut to our budget. Here's the 1.5 with lottery and additional assistance being cut. Chapter 70 is level funded Medicare Part D. We don't think we'll get any more money. The next is veterans benefits. You heard Steve come in today and ask for money. Well, our aid will go up next year because they reimburse us in the following year, but it'll go directly back out to veterans benefits. It's not going to help us in another part of the budget. It's going to go directly into veterans benefits. And we don't have a choice, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't want to not pay the veterans benefits, but we don't have a choice. We're legally obliged to pay those veterans benefits. And we're doing the right thing there. Do you have a question?
What's the percentage of reimbursement?
75%. Correct. Now, you'll see in the other columns, I put some proposed, you know, the state is proposing a local option meals tax. You know, I talked to restaurateurs in town. They tell me that their number of tables is down and also the size of the bill is down. So if that happened, I would be surprised if we got this much money out. And it hasn't been passed. The state, the governor's also talking about a statewide meals tax and a statewide hotel motel tax. These are his numbers from his budget. I think they're honest. So, but it's all speculative because it hasn't passed yet.
Is there not a hotel motel tax already?
We have one locally that you're allowed to do as a local option and we do that. And we get about 300 to 400.
A 300, definitely.
This would be on top of that.
Right, it would be statewide.
Distributed on the lottery form, as I understand it.
Right, they use the lottery formula to distribute it. Next is federal stimulus money. So there's really four pieces of that. One is that there's some police, police money, we think. We haven't gotten word on exactly what that would be for the city of Northampton and we're waiting to hear what that'll be. IDEA, which is the federal special education money. The State Department of Education has not released how that, we're allowed to spend that. The newspaper reported that we were getting a million dollars for the Northampton schools. That's over two federal fiscal years or three state fiscal years. It's not in one year. We're getting a million over three years. And over three fiscal years. And they haven't yet released the regulations about how you can spend it currently, under current regulations, that 115 for Title I would have to go totally to Title I eligible schools. And the IDEA, the 419, 50% of that could be spent on the general side. The rest would have to be spent on special education. So, and then finally, we had a, part of our problem is that we had a number of one-time funds that we used in this year's budget to have, so that we didn't have to make cuts, as many cuts last year, even though we made cuts last year. So stabilization, school's choice surplus, the Smith College donation and Circuit Breaker, which is a fund that the school has. Our expenses, I've gone through this with all of you. This is pretty self-explanatory. These are projections of how we think our expenses could go up. The number on the schools on the screen is a little different than the schools on your sheet because I've had a conversation with the school today and they clarified some numbers for me. But the number on your sheet is the latest number from the business manager in the schools. And then there's the, so there's the city department, Smith Vocational, Northampton Public Schools. And then there's the shared costs, which are insurances, liability and workers comp and all those other insurances, health insurance, retirement and other fringe benefits. We are splitting those between, all of those on a formula. And the formula, which I've talked through with the superintendent and the business manager and superintendent, business manager of both schools is 50% for the Northampton Public Schools, 9% for Smith Vocational, and 41% for the city side. If you go back to the beginning, you'll remember that the schools are actually 61% of the general fund expenditures. So we're actually charging it off at a slightly lower, the chargeback is slightly lower. Giving a little bit more on the school side and the city is picking up a little bit bigger share. Don't pretend you didn't hear that, Fire Chief, okay? So how do we get to the gap? We have the total department request, we allocate the shared costs and we have a department cut. And you add the drop in revenue and we get to the $6 million. Now, your number is a little bit different again because I had to correct some numbers, but this is, this, we're in the $6 million, 6.8 million range. Is this clear, this piece? Have we got there? Okay, I just, for people's, for people's information, just, some people don't have a good sense of what city salaries are. This is just to give you a sense of what the salaries are. And to note that the average city in Northampton pension, which doesn't include teachers, is about $17,000 a year. And then to give you the healthcare costs. This is this year's healthcare cost, so they would be going up by 20% next year if we stayed with the current, with the current plan. And finally, the reserves. And again, this is played out a little differently. We have new information tonight, which I didn't plug in, but we had a transfer to veterans benefits, which we just did, right?
Down, no, this was the early one.
That's the old, the early one. We just did it and we did a transfer to capital plans. We know there'll be a snow and ice transfer. We know there'll be a fire overtime transfer of some amount. This may be, it would be less, maybe more. And veterans benefits, we transferred a little bit more into that.
Which is more than what this is.
So that leaves a very low free cash balance at the end of the day after we do those transfers. And our current stabilization fund has $254,117 in it. And the capital reserve, which we put aside to do capital improvements with, is 1.3 million dollars. It was set aside by this council upon my recommendation to do capital expenditures. Now, we're in a very tight time. Are we going to be having a discussion about capital? We certainly are. But right now, that's where that money is.
Is the new police station also? Is it the police station also?
We're going to have a conversation as a council about the, if you was a council, about the police station. The proposed police station. So, you know, what options, what about state and federal money? People say, well, what about the state money? I think we've talked about a bunch of this, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time. You heard about these various state options and then the federal options. We're still waiting to hear on most of them. I can't budget money that we don't know we have, right? We don't know that we have any of this money, so we really can't budget it until we know what we have. Where are some local actions? Well, we already, I already put out a letter to all of our non-represented, i.e. non-unionized employees, and we froze their wages and their COLA for next year. So, nobody who works for the city who's not in a union will get a wage increase next year, but the same amount this year. Council Dossel asked about soliciting other bids for health insurance. We've been out talking to other insurance companies to look for a better price or a different approach on health insurance, and we'll be, we'll be looking on that. We're looking at further consolidations of any city departments or functions that make sense to try to merge together and see if we can save some money. One of the things that we're looking at pretty seriously right now, for instance, is center purchasing of supplies, because we think we can save some money. But right now, we're very decentralized for supplies in the city side. So, we're looking at that as one way to save some money. I've sent a letter to all the city unions asking them to open up negotiations with us on wages and benefits, and we'll be beginning that process. And I think the school side did the same thing. And we will certainly, in any scenario, be looking at some layoffs, and the number is just dependent on how much we can save in other parts of the budget. There's been discussion of an override, and I certainly think that has to be one of the options, because I think in the budget cuts of the magnitude that we're talking about, people have a right to weigh in on that. But I would not support putting an override on the ballot, so we've done significant cuts and tried to find every single dollar that we can cut. And we're looking for other ideas. This, this, this website is up, this is up on the city's website, and we are getting a number of emails every day with ideas and questions, and we're answering all of those questions, and those are also posted on the city's website. So, the questions come in and we're answering them, and those, those are on the page that has that, has the presentation as well.
These slides are up there, too.
The slides are up. We also will have, we hope to have a video of the finance committee meeting that we did this presentation. We may end up using this one, I don't know. We're going to have a video up as well.
I understand that video has some delay on the...
Council website. Yeah, yeah, we're going to move it, we're going to have a copy there on the city's website. Yeah. Other questions or, yeah?
I've had a look at the numbers. About what people thought. How is the, how is the finalizing hour or who's the Bowser?
I believe that the school side has finalized their numbers, yes.
How about people in high rise?
On our side, we have, we've asked city departments to have their budget numbers into us by ten. We hope to turn it around within two weeks. But on the city side, the numbers that we show you for salaries, Mr. Pyle went through everybody's salaries, and essentially, that's what they're going to be. We're finalizing, make sure, but we think that's essentially right.
What is your salary?
It's eighty thousand dollars a year.
And you'd rather have a twelve percent cut on there?
I'm not asking anybody to take a pay cut, but I'm certainly looking at whether or not my position should have one. But we're not asking any city employees to take a pay cut. We're asking them not to take a pay raise.
Twelve percent, what are you going to do?
Layoffs and, and, right, right.
You as a leader, I could bring right up and say a little bit.
I've already said that I've asked them to cut, to freeze their wages and their COLA, and we're going to be talking about health insurance. Yeah.
How many employees do we have there for the city? Not counting the school department, but just the city?
On the city side, I had that. I had it in my head and I'm going to forget it. It's around the two hundred range.
Two hundred?
A little bit more, I think. I can get you. I had it in my other bag, I didn't bring that. Yeah. Yeah, I think, what's that?
Snow and ice on the winter season.
No, we don't have a final number on snow and ice for this year. And I also, just as an aside, I've been asked a lot about, about the snow insurance, which we did not buy this year. I just want to remind people that it was forty thousand dollars to buy it. I think we had to buy it up, we had a, we had a, was it sixty-two or sixty-five inches? And the, and we got reimbursed five thousand dollars an inch, so we needed an additional eight inches to make back what we spent in the premium, and we're not there yet this year, even though it feels like we should be, we're not. So, we didn't buy the insurance this year, and we used it to pay for an employee at the DPW to actually plow the snow.
And if it stops snowing right now, all right.
And I don't think, you know, and I don't think we would have hit seventy inches this year, so we're still ahead long run. And I think I got the numbers right. Council Richmond?
So, roughly, what's the total number of all city employees in the schools and on the city side?
I think it's six, six hundred.
Six.
Yes.
Six hundred plus something.
Yeah, a little bit over six hundred.
Thank you.
I know, he just asked about what you're making your mayor. Is there a reason why we don't have a fire chief?
We, I wanted to show averages of the real, of all the main people. I can, we can give you all the salaries. Those are all public. It's not a big deal.
It was just so that we could develop an average. Those would scoop the average. There's only one person for that, but there's a lot of people that are in these ranges. Thank you for making such a clear, frequent thing.
Well, I hope it was helpful, and we'll keep talking. And I'm going to be doing, I know that Karen in my office is working with a lot of you to set up neighborhood meetings. Yeah?
I'll just point out, I just looked at the comments, citizen comments. There's three pages of those, and it's really informative. Hope to take advantage of looking at those.
And if people have questions, they really should write them in, and we're still refining the answers, you know? People are asking really interesting questions, so it's really, it's a good thing. Okay, are we done with, with this? Yes. Okay. I think that's all we had to find out. Am I saying that right? Okay. Okay, motion to adjourn and find out.
Make a motion, wait. Adjourn and find out.
No in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Oh, you have a second. Opposed?
Chief, can you turn the light on, chief? It's the far right switch.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the role of the council.
The other right.
Counsel Bardsley?
What's this?
Counsel Carney?
Judge Constance Darstall?
Here.
Counsel Miriam LaBarge?
Right by.
Counsel Raymond LaBarge?
Here.
Counsel Murphy?
Here.
Counsel Narkleus?
Present.
Counsel Reckman?
Present.
Counsel Steck?
Here.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is a presentation by the chief, the fire chief. This is by Chief Ryan Doggins to Deputy Chief Chris Norris.
Thank you, mayor. I must say, I was really impressed with PowerPoint. I was going to do my own, but I didn't want to steal your.
Thank you.
This is a very special night for, for Chris Norris, and that sort of the mayor, the council, ourselves, and the deputy chiefs are going to confer upon him graduating from the National Fire Academy, and we'll talk about that in a minute. I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Cheverette, who's our senior deputy, to join me at the podium along with Chris. And I'd just like to point out, this is probably one of Deputy Cheverette's last appearances before the council, because he is retiring in the next three months. So, we certainly wanted to have him partake in this honor as well. What I'm going to do is, this is a certificate provided by the federal government without stimulus dollars. I'll pass that around. And this is the first time that a Northampton Fire Department employee has completed the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer course. This is a rigorous four-year commitment, where Chris has gone to the Fire Academy, spent two weeks a year there, and in addition to that, written a series of papers that are sort of graduate-level cumulative to a thesis. I was fortunate, and it's all too many years ago, that I graduated from this program when I was chief in another community, but this is the first time that anyone in Northampton has completed this. Hopefully, it's not the last time we're before you. I'm going to ask Chris to speak a little bit about the papers he wrote, because they're designed to be brought back to the community and produce a benefit. So, we'll embarrass him fully here.
I was expecting this anyways.
As the chief said, the program itself is a four-year program. Each year, you go down for two weeks, you come back, and you have six months to write a research paper in a topic that is pertinent and relative to any issues facing the fire service across the country, and then also pertaining back to your own department. With that, looking at my four papers over the past years, I focused on just that, the issues facing the country and our department and what they were. The first year, I did it on physical fitness in the fire service. The second year, I did it on emergency vehicle response to automatic alarm activations. The third year, I did it on the challenges associated with the self-contained breathing apparatuses and individuals running out of air in areas immediately dangerous to life and health. And then this past year, I did it on communications within organizations. And the one I'm actually most proud of, and we soon implemented after it got approved down by the National Fire Academy, was the emergency vehicle response to automatic fire alarm activations. And with that, we looked at, across the nation, that is the second-leading cause consistently in the fire service for fatalities and injuries. And we looked at some of our numbers in regards to responses, how they compare to the national trend, and what areas could we improve to minimize any potential for any of our members getting hurt or killed in that type of situation. And we did, in fact, change the way we do respond to those in the Department SOG, and it has been extremely successful since then. In addition to that, the program itself, not only are the topics themselves exceptionally interesting and challenging, but one of the huge benefits about these types of programs is the network you develop with a number of fire chief, chief officers across the country. It's, it's a good feeling to know that I can literally pick up the phone in some of the largest departments in Texas, California, Florida, New York, and have a one-on-one conversation with some of the chiefs in those larger organizations through this program. So, that is a huge benefit of this program itself. In closing, it would, I'd be, it wouldn't be right if I did not mention that, you know, through the entire four years. But when you complete this program, they send you a letter, and one of the first paragraphs in the letter, it basically states, if it wasn't for the support of the city, the mayor, and the department, and the chief, this would not be possible, and that's the truth. It is a huge commitment. It's a four-year commitment, and I thank everyone for the opportunity. And then finally, going along those same terms, my family. My mom and dad are here tonight, my wife and my two daughters, who you probably heard earlier. You know, being away two weeks a year for this, especially with two, two young daughters, is extremely challenging, and I thank my wife for that and supporting me through all of this process, so. I didn't quite expect him to talk that long. He's going to start giving me a run for my money. But, but I think it's very important, and one of the reasons we're here to listen in front of council is to really make this a public recognition. Chris stands before you tonight as an example of a leader. Others will follow that, and I think that's very important, as well as to recognize the family contribution as part of this as well. So, on behalf of the mayor, the council, myself, and Deputy Chief Cheverette, I'd like to present you, Chris, with the graduation ceremony from the Executive Fire Officer Program.
Thank you. And I want to say a thanks as well to Deputy Chief Cheverette. I hope we see you again before you, before you retire.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations, Deputy Chief Norris.
Just in case we don't see Deputy Cheverette, I would like a round of applause for your service.
Congratulations. Thanks to the Norrises for lending us, Chris. Okay. All right, next is a presentation by the Ad Hoc Committee on Best Practices in Northampton Decision Making, and I'm not sure if it's leading, is it? Oh, great. All right.
Hey, good evening, mayor, city councilor, and public. I'm Lisa DiPiano, the co-chair of the Ad Hoc Committee of Best Practices.
I'm Alex Geese, with a member of the Best Practices Committee filling in for the other co-chair, Jim Plama, who couldn't be here tonight.
And you all should receive this packet David handed out to you. And for those of you who don't know, we were charged about a year ago to create and oversee a public process to review the city's decision-making. And so, we've gone through that process, and we're here tonight to share our final recommendations with the city council and the, and the public. And so, ever since we were last here in December, we've conducted a ninety-day public review period. And in that public review period, we did two public forums, one in January and one in February. We also went on the radio, WHMP, and had all ten recommendations published in the Gazette. We also spoke to the Republican and the Valley Advocate. We also set lots of online communications with community groups and listservs, city boards, and we came up with a Google group and sent out the recommendations in that group, all asking for responses. And you can see all of this recorded in Appendix sixteen, where we shared all the notes from the public forum, all the comments that we received online are all in the, in the last chapter. And so, I just want to run down, for those of you that haven't heard, kind of the bullet points of the recommendations. The first one is develop written protocols for conducting various types of public meetings for city committees, departments, and other decision-making bodies. The second one, the city should assume an ongoing responsibility for explaining the detailed functions and processes of municipal government. The third, the mayor finance committee and finance director should assume an ongoing responsibility for explaining the city's annual budget in detail. And it's a great example to come here tonight and see that. Number four, the city of Northampton should improve its website to be more user-friendly, ensure greater consistency of the posting of public documents, and increase the overall effectiveness for public communication. Five, review and if necessary revise current procedures for making appointments to the city committee, boards, commissions, and other positions to ensure that the process is clear, consistent, and democratic, and that the appointments reflect the diversity of the community. Number six, commission an independent review of the Office of Planning and Development. Seven, create a vision, mission statement for city government that prioritize citizen engagement and participation, ethical behavior, and best practices in decision-making. Number eight, designate a standing committee to continue the work begun by the Ad Hoc Committee of Best Practices to improve city decision-making and promote public participation. Number nine, review city council rules and procedures and city ordinances in relationship to best practices, goals, and guidelines. And the last one, initiate a comprehensive review of the city charter, both to see if general modernization of the document is warranted and to examine several areas of expressed public concern about our current structure of government. And I just wanted to add that ever since we created this document, we received two more comments. One was to create a blog, to have all city boards and committees create a blog for what they're doing, and to have an email list associated with the blog to go out to members with their meeting agendas and minutes and all those kinds of things. And we believe that even due to this financial crisis that we're in right now, that many of these recommendations can be implemented with a little financial incentive.
I'm going to have a busy meeting. I don't have much to add. I'd really like to thank Council Narkowitz, Reckman, and Bardsley. They did you proud. I can't imagine that being assigned it, well, David pointed out, this is exactly one year from our first meeting. That's twenty-four full meetings, that's a number of subcommittees, that's the whole run. So, they did it with a lot of good humor, they did a lot of heavy lifting, and we appreciate, appreciate them. The council should appreciate them as well. An echo, too, I hope that the question of funds doesn't subtract this. The challenge is to get started right away. I hope tonight that, that the council will, will move where they can to start this deliberation and conversation. I hope the new zoning revision committee, which has its first meeting next week, takes a look, a hard look at this report. Zoning is really at the nexus of a lot of the background anger and frustration that we heard. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a, a lot, there was a perception that it's a closed system, that it's, that the language is so off-putting, that there's some level of expertise to be involved in this. The fact is obviously not. We looked closely at the Meadows rezoning revisions three, four years ago. That was a process that was enormously contentious at the beginning because of the hard work of some city councilors and community leaders. They produced a result that maybe didn't please everybody, but felt that they had been listened to, felt that the final product was something they could live with. Zoning revision is very similar. It's, it can be, and I hope that the, kind of the first order of business is to think about how they're going to open that language up so that more people, all the people who want to take part in it can. Neighborhoods can be heard from, can understand what it is that people value about their neighborhoods, value about this city, and the sacrifices or changes that they're willing to put up with. So, with that said, I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of what we did. I think, counting on you guys to pick up the ball.
Thank you both for your service.
Thank you. And members of the public can find this on our website, northhampton.gov/bestpractices. There they can copy.
There will be also copies at Forbes Library, at Lilly Library. I assume that the mayor's office will have one. They'll be available, people who want to look at it.
Great. Counsel Dossel is hand over the best, and Counsel Narkleus?
Yeah, I would like to thank the committee. This set of recommendations is really astronomical, the job that you've done, you left no stone unturned. And the councilors that, that work on this committee, Counsel Bardsley, Counsel...
And we are not gonna let this sit on the shelf. I've had an extensive conversation with Counselor Reckman and what we should be doing with this and where we should go with it, what kind of outreach we should be looking at, and I know that you've done a lot of outreach. But I feel as though the first step for this particular group, for the council, is to take this and go to each committee, the planning board, the conservation committee, the DPW, and any other boards, and get five minutes with them and present them with a copy of this and ask for them to give us written comments back to the council about how this can be implemented and what they see in this. And that is where the start would be. I think after that, I hope, once we have that accomplished, probably a separate meeting of the city council itself to just hash over the report and, and to make the moves that would enact some of the recommendations. So I thank you very much.
Counsel Reckman, I could say.
Thank you, Jim. One thing that it seems to me is that the special meeting need not wait until we have heard from all the different boards and committees. That the council could have a special meeting to, solely to discuss this report, so we would know where each other's standing, what each other's thoughts are. And we certainly want to know what the planning board and the Board of Health and all the other boards' thoughts are, but I think we can have, we can proceed to have a meeting sooner than we have an answer from all those groups.
Counsel Marian LaBarge?
I wanted to echo what Bob Reckman stated. I think it makes sense, and, but I also, you know, I've heard names mentioned about the great work they've done, and Wendy Buxton has not been mentioned, and I want to thank her also, but I want to thank everybody who was on that committee for doing such a great job.
And the public, who really, the public were the ones who guided us the most.
Counsel.
I was gonna ask the council president, I think, I think that one of the other things is several of these recommendations, you know, if you look back at our original resolution, we talked about sending these recommendations when they came back in to our committees on the council. I think that's something we need to talk about even tonight, if possible. I'm not sure if we have to do that under new business, but it, there seems like there are, there are a bunch of them, four or five, that are clearly identifiable, that could go to like ordinance committee, could go to the finance committee, could go to some committees to get the conversation started within our committee structure, would be enough as well.
Counsel, are you done?
Yes, I'm done. I just wanted to put that out there that we could possibly under new business make some referrals like that.
Counsel Darsle, I mean Counsel Barzley.
I have a similar thought to Counsel Nakowitz. I think there are some of those that really we could refer to our council committees. Bringing them to other departments and other boards may be interesting for some more input, but those are not the entities that are gonna have to do some of the nitty-gritty work on these. You know, for example, an obvious one is number nine, reviewing the city council rules. I mean, that is the jurisdiction of the ordinance committees, so it would be the ordinance committee that would ultimately have to do that. And I'm concerned that not too much time goes by as we present these to other boards and then have a general meeting, and then that would likely bring us close to the summer, and it's always a slow summer in terms of having a lot of meetings and stuff. So there was a clear sense from the public that we move forward on this as soon as possible, not to lose the momentum that we've been slowly gaining with our year of our meeting and conversing with the public members. And if you go through this, you'll see that there was a subgroup of this committee, did not include myself, that did a lot of what they called inreach, you know, in talking to people within government, not outreach. And so they, we've done a lot of that already, and I'm not saying there's an opportunity for more. So I'm really interested in making some of these referrals so some of our own committees can start doing some of this.
If I could give an answer to that. It certainly is not my intention to hold this up in any way. I want to see this move. I did have an outline that unfortunately I left on my desk, so I can't bring it up, but I'll certainly work on this between now and the next council meeting, and we will have definite recommendations at the next council meeting as to where it will go. And possibly a meeting time set up for the full council to meet in a separate venue where we can have a lot of give and take with the public on just these things.
Counsel Reckman?
And I assume, Jim, therefore, that if the ordinance committee is going to meet before the council meets again, and the ordinance committee chose to take up issue number nine in a very general way, that would be fine with you, and appointments and evaluation might take place after five. So any committee who thinks they see something which is germane to them is welcome to discuss this prior to us making official referrals or recommendations to various committees or groups in the city. We don't want to be committees.
Absolutely.
Counsel Marian?
I think number 10 also, it's really something for us to look at. I mean, we all know what the charter looks like, and it's so outdated, and there's a lot of work to be involved in that.
Any other questions? I mean, you could, at the end of the meeting, refer things to where you have to do it in kind of more formally as...
I'm providing that.
Do you want to vote, do you want to vote to accept these recommendations, and it seems to be the committees who...
Because I think, I think just perhaps one way to do it is to say, is that at the next meeting of each one of the city council committees, put on your agenda this set of recommendations, have a discussion about them, and to say, these are the ones that we feel we'd like to work on within our committee, or, or they may be overlapping. That's, that's one of the things, several of these recommendations overlap multiple committees, they may involve an ad hoc committee, they may involve, you know, so it's not as clear-cut that there's a committee for each one of these. So maybe we could do that at the next meeting of our committees, subcommittees, who would take it up on the agenda and have a discussion.
But do you want to have a vote to accept the report?
I would move that the city council accept the final recommendations for ensuring the use of locally and nationally accepted best practices in Northampton decision-making.
So, do you have any further discussion, you kind of have a discussion, all in favor? Opposed, and that, I think then the recommendation is that it go to each committee.
Yes. And I want to also thank the other non-council members of our committee. With Wendy, and Lisa, and Jim, and Alex, they worked harder or harder than the three of us sitting on this side of the room. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Do you, any further discussion on this? Okay, we're gonna...